In front of it, shuffle your paper, all that stuff. But if you can keep it up, that will be a huge help to share. And then, once we start the meeting, we need to give about 30 seconds to allow for the want you pause order, to allow for the delay before cable can start.
If there are two people missing, why is there only one empty chair? Oh, there's two empty chairs.
Next to you.
Yeah, yeah, there's one here and one there.
Yeah, there's one back there.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, there's a...
That would go here, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
You guys have a torridist always just now the time to get in, slide in here.
I feel like that's me, too.
Mm.
Caroline, you said we call the meeting to order and then wait 30 seconds, or?
Yes, call it to order and then just give up. It's supposed to start before everyone.
Or maybe we'll announce that we're going to call it to order and then actually call it to order.
Yep, that would be good.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order in about 30 seconds, so.
All right, so Brian.
Can everybody turn mics on and then we'll give it another minute? We no longer have our official clock up there either, what happened to that? All right, we're still waiting for a couple members, but I think they show up great and if not, we still can proceed. So I will officially call to order the meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. It is Wednesday, September 1st. This is just our second meeting back in person, so the first one was really quiet. So thanks to everybody who came out to participate tonight. Number one on our agenda this evening, as usual, is the information exchange and an update on the recent actions by the PRB, or the Project Review Board, which I'm sure will come from Caroline, as usual.
Sure. The Project Review Board continues to be very busy, so I'm going to cheat and pull up their agenda from the last month because there were so many things that they reviewed. They approved for the Desert of Maine, which is something you guys are familiar with. You created that new nature-based in our overly district. Desert of Maine came in for a change of use that was permitted under that new regulation in a site plan amendment. They're actually going to be putting in a mini golf course, which was part of that definition, which they explained during the process. So they did get approval to do that. We had Down East Woodworking on US Route 1 South come for a conceptual presentation for 1,800 square foot addition, so they'll probably come back next month. Wilbers of Maine came for a design review certificate. Linda Bean's topside kitchen at 88 Main, they've been a few times now, you might remember me reporting, they had to slightly adjust the design for the second level of the addition, where they're taking down the ATM. So they made some material changes to there to kind of tweak the outdoor seating and the, what was previously proposed to be glass ceiling on that section of the building. Night hot kitchen, you may have noticed they have a food truck next to Mass Landing down at Freeport Crossing. They came for a design review certificate. They're going to be the restaurant occupying that small space there. So they got approval for signage and some screening and some outdoor alterations for a little bit of outdoor seating. Foiled hair salon, it's going to be going in next door. They got a change of use. Formerly in the space that was grand gourmet, they're going to open a hair salon in there. We did have a renewal of an approval or an extension for the Denny Block. This was before you years ago, with the contract zoning process, they were going to do an infill building, kind of between Vineyard Vines and Sperry. That approval lapsed. They got the approval, we're getting ready to start, and then we had a pandemic. So they got the approval. Design review can extend for a year, the site plan can be for two years. And then finally, there was kind of another conceptual for a change of use in site plan amendment for Mr. Tuna and Good Fire Brewing, who are going to be occupying on Route 1 South where El Jefe and Conundrum were, on May, corner of US Route 1 and South Freeport Road. And then they also talked about remote participation policy and the joint workshop with the council. They are interested in that, but they do have a vacancy, so they did want to wait for that vacancy to be filled, which we think will be early next month. That's what they've been up to.
Great. That is a lot of projects for one meeting.
Yep.
All right. Does anybody else have any information to exchange? Moving on, item number two, we will have a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance pertaining to the shoreline zoning. This will be a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to Freeport zoning ordinance pertaining to state mandated zoning regulations, or shoreline zoning regulations. And we would like to point out that all new proposed changes have been drafted to align with the state's minimum requirements. So these are changes that are originating from the state, not from the members of the board. So this whole exercise is to bring the town's ordinances up to state requirements. Just want to put that out there right off the bat. Tax amendments are proposed to the following sections: Section 104, definition; Section 201, general restrictions; 202, nonconformance; 203, changes in amendments; 302, the map, zoning map; Section 303, zoning district boundaries; 304, map corrections; 401, purpose and land use controls; 402, rural residential districts; 1 and 1A; 403, rural residential district 2; Section 409, commercial 1; Section 422, industrial 2; Section 426, the island district; Section 509, shoreline zoning regulations; Section 601, enforcement and Section 602, site plan review. And while we're at it, we're also cleaning up some non-substantive text amendments, which are proposed throughout the ordinance to correct typographical errors and incorporate gender-neutral pronouns.
Right.
Now we're all official. Caroline, do you want to start it off, or are we going to kick it straight to Mike?
No, I'll give you just a little bit of background. So the state last amended the shoreline zoning regulations in 2015. In 2019, the planning board at the time and plus staff had a public hearing, many of you were probably there, to incorporate the same language into our zoning ordinance. It was then sent to DEP for preliminary review, and we were advised that it needed additional significant changes to be compliant with state shoreline zoning. So we started that process, mixed in with a few other things, had a pandemic, and we brought in Mike Morse from Morse Environmental Consulting to assist us with this project. He has a lot of experience working with DEP and shoreline zoning, and so he was able to work with staff and insert the language that we needed to have into our ordinance. Our public has been waiting for this. There's changes that do impact some people, I think, in a positive way here. One of the things we'll get into when we look at the map is quite a few people are coming out of resource protection. There's a lot of areas that were resource protection for habitat. Being an RP, resource protection one, you really can't do anything with your property. So I just want to apologize for the delay that it's taken to get us to this point, but we have the whole package here. We're confident that it was done correctly this time, as far as process. State mandated, we have to make our language comply. We have to have a hearing at the planning board. They would make a recommendation and a finding that they believe it's consistent with state shoreline zoning regulations. They would send it to the council. Council has a similar public hearing process. We then send it to DEP, and they have 45 days to review or approve it and give us any conditional feedback back. So we do have Mike Morse here tonight. He was prepared to give you a fairly brief overview of the 275-page document you have before you. A lot of the changes that people have been most interested in, that we've had the most inquiries on, seem to be the nonconforming uses and structures section, and then, you know, tree cutting and impervious coverage on lots. So he's going to give you an overview of that, and then you can ask questions. You can open it to the public, as long as it's not property-specific, he'll be able to answer questions for the public as well.
All right, Mike, you ready? We are ready if you are. Excellent.
You have your lecter in here. Well, good evening. My name's Mike Morse. As you've already understood, Morse Environmental Consulting, I'm the president, CEO, treasurer, and janitor of Morse Environmental Consulting. I was contacted by the town to assist with drafting amendments to the shoreline zoning section of the town's ordinance. As you well know, some of the shoreline zoning is specifically called away in Section 507 of the ordinance, but there are other shoreline zoning provisions mixed in throughout the rest of the ordinance. So my objective was to prepare the draft in accordance with the state minimum standards, as Caroline pointed out, state standards that were amended by the Maine DEP through rulemaking process in 2015. There have also been several statutory changes enacted by the legislature since 2015, and those have also been incorporated into this draft. Before we get going, I just wanted to ask clarification on one thing. When Caroline asked me to speak for a limited, no more than five hours this evening, does that include a break in between, or is that a...
We'll do whatever you need to.
Okay. Well, I'll try to keep it moving. No, we are, so my target is like 20 minutes. Give you like a 20-minute update here on some of the highlights. The first, my first comment that I would like to mention is, and I think it's already been stated tonight, is that these changes are state-driven. I would say for the most part, there are a few other standards that are cleaned up in here as well, cleaned up because they either were inconsistent with some of the state language, or they were archaic and no longer really applied. So overall, this is just to make the ordinance compliant and consistent with state standards. Please note that if you don't appreciate some of the state standards, I don't work for the state, and I'm not to be held responsible for those standards, but I'd be happy to try to answer questions related to these as we go. So in terms of format, I'm not sure if you'd like me, the board would like me to proceed and just go through everything, touch on the highlights, or if you want to stop in between if you have questions. We can do it either way. We can always come back to things as we have questions. So I'll leave it up to you. If you ask questions during the process, feel free.
I think we'll go through the highlight reel, and if people have urgent questions that seem like they need immediate clarification, we'll stop you.
Perfect. All right, let's hit it. All right, Section 104, probably one of the easiest sections to discuss tonight, the definition section. There are some additions, some revisions to the definitions, again, largely just to meet state minimum standards. Some of these state minimum standard definitions and some of the other language we're going to talk about this evening will also help with the administration and enforcement of the ordinance. By who? By the town officials, by the code enforcement officer, by the planner, and then the various boards, the planning board, appeals board, et cetera. Where, there really isn't anything overly significant to talk about in the definitions from my standpoint, so I'm going to move on to Section 202, which is nonconformance. Within the nonconformance section, various changes have been implemented into the draft document you have in front of you. Several of these changes I'll highlight now. Nonconforming uses section, there are some changes, again, just for consistency with state requirements, related to what can be done with a nonconforming use if it's discontinued, can it be expanded, et cetera, et cetera. Perhaps one of the most exciting or stimulating topics we'll probably tap into a little bit tonight is expansion, expansions of nonconforming structures. I'll expound on that just a little bit, just for the sake of this meeting and for the public hearing, the benefit of all in attendance. Nonconforming structures have been afforded the right or opportunity to be expanded. Nonconforming structures being structures, for shoreline zoning purposes, structures that don't meet the minimum shoreline stepback in particular. There may also be other nonconformities for a structure such as a structure that exceeds the height limit. But for the most part, what we're going to be talking about for a few minutes now is just the nonconforming structure expansion limitations for a structure that's too close to the shoreline. For many years, the state and the town of Freeport and every single municipality in the state has regulated or restricted expansions of nonconforming structures using two specific metrics, specifically floor area and volume. So each structure has floor area. Think about real estate, repurchasing a property, selling a property or a house. Think about floor area in terms of how much floor space do you have inside the structure. Volume, think about a cardboard box with four sides, a top and a bottom, there's volume inside of that. Those were the two metrics that were used for years and years and years in order to restrict expansions to various nonconforming structures. This was implemented in January 1st, 1989, at the state level and adopted into ordinances sometime shortly thereafter. The, in 2015, let me back up, in 2013, I believe it was, the legislature was asked to revisit these expansion metrics, this floor area and volume method for calculating expansions. The, and by the way, the expansion limitation for floor area and volume was no more than 30% of the structure that existed, or the floor area volume of the structure that existed on January 1st, 1989, the date it first took effect. So in 2013, the legislature revisited this for various reasons, particularly volume calculations were fairly difficult, as you imagine. I mentioned, you know, picture a cardboard box with four sides and a top and a bottom, pretty simple to calculate volume in that. However, volume expansions on some of the more complicated-looking structures we have out there today are, it gets to be a bit more onerous, to say the least. It's challenging not only for a landowner, but also for code enforcement staff reviewing an application, or perhaps a planning board reviewing an application. I'll just pause just for a second here. So the legislature, working with DEP staff at the time, ended up developing a totally different way of approaching restrictions to nonconforming structures, using two new different metrics, specifically footprint and height. So height is pretty self-explanatory, it's just the height of the structure, excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas, and that sort of thing. Footprint, on the other hand, is a snapshot, if you will, of just the footprint of the structure on the ground. It does not take into consideration how many floors you have, whether you have a basement, whether you have crawl spaces, whether you have a space behind knee walls upstairs in a structure. It simply looks at the footprint of the structure on the ground, which includes overhanging extensions, decks, patios, and that sort of thing. The simplest way to describe how this is implemented is to consider it as like this tiered expansion process, if you will. So the further back from the shoreline the structure is, excuse me, the greater the expansion can happen to the structure. As an example, within 25 feet of the shoreline, a structure either cannot be expanded, or there's a caveat that allows for a structure to expand up to 800 square feet and up to 15 feet in height. 15 feet in height limits you to a one-story structure, obviously. And it's or 30% of the footprint that existed, again, on January 1st, 1989, whichever is greater. So there is that piece to it as well. Whereas if you move back to areas greater than 75 feet from the shoreline, then you're allowed to expand up to 1,500 square feet versus the 800, and increase the structure height up to 25 feet. This is DEP and the legislature's way of trying to control volume and floor area expansion without having to deal with volume and floor area, frankly. So the idea is it's much simpler and straightforward, even though I'm not going to claim that the language is necessarily 100% simple to apply to a given project. Some projects, yes, other projects not as much. But overall, it is a simpler method to consider expansions. For those that are wondering, you know, what does this do in terms of my project? I have a house on whatever road next to the ocean. Can I expand more, or can I expand less with this provision? Generally speaking, well, the state's legislature and DEP's intent was to be neutral in that respect, not to make it more restrictive and not make it any less restrictive. The reality is, from my own experience as a consultant, is that I've seen greater expansion capability being afforded landowners under the new, under this newer set of standards, not in all cases. And if there are any landowners here that are wondering about your own property, you'd have to evaluate that yourselves. But generally speaking, there tends to be a greater allowance for a larger expansion to be done. There are still limitations, as you would expect, but it's a different way of doing this. Also of note is a provision that does allow for, very explicitly allows for, expansions of structures within a resource protection district, as identified on your shoreline zoning map, which here in Freeport is not overly extensive, I don't believe. But to this point, it does allow, clearly allow for expansions within the resource protection district. All right, so that's all I'm going to say for right now about nonconforming structure expansions. And except to say, by the way, the town of Freeport, according to the state, does not have a choice. You have to implement this new language, you have to adopt the new language. In fact, the state has already adopted this, or they already apply these standards to projects within Freeport anyway, because it's a state law provision. So that would be in addition to your current floor area and volume metrics that are also being implied. So the reality of this is, today, if somebody comes into the town with an application to expand a nonconforming structure, they have to consider all four metrics: floor area, volume, footprint, and height, the last two to accommodate the state. With this change, you'll at least be rolling it back to only two metrics, consistent with the state. All right, enough about that. Foundations under the nonconforming section, Section 202, again, there's been a slight shift or movement from having foundations underneath the heading of expansions, nonconforming structure expansions, and it's moved to its own separate subsection, again, to comply with state requirements. Also in the nonconformance section, the last point I want to discuss on that section tonight is the nonconforming lot section within the shoreline zone. Again, just some changes to correct some deficiencies within the current ordinance. All right, moving on to Section 304, map corrections. That is proposed to be deleted or repealed from the ordinance. The simple, basic, most fundamental reason for that is the current, this provision currently affords the opportunity to the planning board or to the town to administratively amend the zoning map that was legislatively adopted by the town's council. And there's a question about legality there. Is that really legal, or is that not? And my understanding in the past has been that that is not a legal process. So I'm not going to claim to be an attorney and sort that one out for you, but that is slated for removal. Ordinarily, with any ordinance amendments or map amendments, it's, there's a required legislative process that needs to, to, you have to go through this legislative process, go to the planning board, just like these amendments here tonight, and eventually to the town council for adoption. So this, Section 304, was deemed to be inconsistent with state standards, and also, again, might have presented a legal problem as well. All right, moving right along to the shoreline zone regulations in Section 507. This is, as I kind of alluded to earlier, this is kind of the meat and potatoes of all the shoreline zoning standards, minus some of these other provisions we've already talked about, definitions, nonconformance. Caroline mentioned this proposal to remove moderate and high-value waterfall and wadingbird habitat areas in Section 507 F1. It's the establishment of district section. This proposal is consistent with state minimum standards in 2015. This proposal is consistent with state minimum standards in two thousand and, May 2004, sorry, May 2012, the Maine DEP amended its own local, through rulemaking, its, its state shoreline zoning guidelines, minimum guidelines, to eliminate that requirement. In a nutshell, there was some amount of redundancy between the shoreline zoning requirement for these waterfall, wadingbird habitat areas to be protected under shoreline zoning, and then a different state law administered by the DEP, which is the Natural Resources Protection Act. The reason the state rolled this out of, or removed this from resource protection zoning under shoreline zoning, and we're proposing to do that here this, this evening in the, in the current revisions, is because on, under the shoreline zoning standards, if you have a property in resource protection, there is no ability, or very, very, very limited ability to ever be able to build a house, or any structure, or conduct any vegetation removal within the resource protection district. It's, as a generalization, it's almost just a flat-out, no, you can't do that, because it's zone resource protection for this two-hundred-and-fifty-foot zone. These waterfall and wadingbird habitat areas are established or mapped by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, as you might expect. Under the Natural Resources Protection Act review for similar projects adjacent to these waterfall, wadingbird habitat areas, under, under the DEP's review, they have the ability in, to consult the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, wildlife biologists who monitor these areas, who map these areas, and ask them, is, is this project okay to happen here within this, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the coastal wetland edge, or this, you know, where you have this waterfall, wadingbird habitat, or freshwater wetland? Is it okay if, to be less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet? And they'll analyze this on a lot-by-lot basis or case-by-case basis. And in many cases, we were seeing Fish and Wildlife, the very agency that was mapping these areas requesting a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot resource protection district, the agency saying, well, gee, no, we could live with a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, or a one-hundred-foot setback, or a seventy-five-foot setback. Again, on a case-by-case basis, when an application rolled in the door at DEP. Well, if the agency that maps these areas and wants these areas protected was okay with considering these applications on a case-by-case basis, then why would we be so ultra-restrictive on the shoreline zoning? So let's, so DEP ended up saying, let's, let's remove this from shoreline zoning and let the NRPA review at DEP, review this on a case-by-case basis. There is still zoning, local zoning, that will apply to these areas, shoreline zoning. There'll still be a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot shoreline zone. It's just the setback won't be an automatic two-hundred-and-fifty feet. The setback here in Freeport is, I think coastal area is a seventy-five feet, I believe. So it'd be down to seventy-five feet. And again, if DEP, through DEP's review, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of a waterfall, wadingbird habitat, it, it is determined that to protect the waterfall, wadingbird habitat, there really needs to be a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, then that's what we'll apply as well. So that's the, that's the resource protection waterfall, wadingbird habitat change in a Table one, under, excuse me, under section 507 is the table of land uses. Again, there were just several deficiencies in there, several omissions that needed to be adjusted or corrected to comply with state minimum standards, and also that would really benefit the, the town's implementation and administration of shoreline zoning. Moving on to section 507 H3, this clarifies lot coverage in the shoreline zone, again, as the original language became inconsistent with, and out of compliance, if you will, with the state minimum language. The language that has been added, it's significantly the same as what you have currently in the ordinance, with several exceptions. One is that it now includes driveways to be counted towards lot coverage, and there are reasons for that related to, you know, is a, I won't get into that. They can give examples of that if you'd like, but, but it now includes driveways, and it all, but it also incorporates two exemptions. One is for public boat launch facilities. Picture a Department of Conservation, marine resources, fish and wildlife, somebody coming in, or, or the town of Freeport wishing to establish a boat launch, and somebody is willing to donate a free piece of land, if there is such a thing as a free piece of land, or a low-cost piece of land. Oftentimes, throughout the state, it's, it was realized that these pieces of land were very small. So you couldn't put in, the state couldn't, or the town could not put in a boat launch without automatically exceeding the twenty percent lot coverage limitation. So that's why that was, was removed. And then the other exemption that has been incorporated into the new language for lot coverage is an exemption for naturally occurring ledge and other rock outcroppings for lots of record on March 24th, 1990, which happened to be the date, may seem random, but that was the date that the lot coverage standards first, first came into, into effect at the state level. So picture a, you know, we're, we live in the state of Maine with a rocky coastline, and picture a, a piece of land that's two acres in size, but an acre of that is, is rocky outcrop, heading down, you know, leading down towards the highest annual tideline, towards the tidal area. Well, already we're at fifty percent lot coverage. So does that mean you can't put in a driveway, you can't build a house, you can't put a shed in? Yes, that was the limitation, or the restriction. So that forced somebody to build greater than two-hundred-and-fifty feet outside of the shoreline zone. So it exempts that natural condition. It's not intended to allow somebody to go in with a backhoe and scrape up all the soil down to ledge and, and get rid of it and create something like, like that. Again, naturally occurring ledge and rock, rock outcroppings. Section 507 H8 adds a provision to allow for low-retaining walls in certain areas used for landscaping purposes. Pretty simple. As, as typical for DEP, they had to also include some language to, for planting some native vegetation, or some type of vegetative buffer between the wall and the shoreline, and minimum setbacks. But it's, it's intended to allow folks with a, you know, a lot of bare soil on their lawn, or in the yard, or a grass lawn, to be able to add a low-retaining wall up to two feet in height, and to level off an area a little bit, to make a nice landscaping improvement. It's deemed to be pretty innocuous environmentally. Section 507 Q is proposed for repeal. This is timber harvesting within the shoreline zone. Timber harvesting was actually previously repealed by the town of Freeport, subject to a certain timing restriction or provision for the repeal to occur. I won't bog you down with the details. But that repeal date, that timing has already happened, it occurred several, at least several years ago. So now we're just simply deleting that language from the ordinance. So technically, that language could be deleted on its own, without even needing to go through this, this process of a formal adoption or amendment process. That has already been decided by the town, and this is just the deletion for that. Section, excuse me, 507, now proposed 507 Q, it's formerly 507 R, is the clearing of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting within the shoreline zone. Few minor changes there. The plot size for how you measure what can be removed for trees within this seventy-five-foot or one-hundred-foot buffer adjacent to the water is increased from twenty-five feet by twenty-five feet up to twenty-five feet by fifty feet, which is actually better for landowners. It's much simpler for a landowner to, to comply with this, this revised plot system, because there are natural conditions that couldn't, didn't, did not meet the, the minimum points of trees within the smaller plots, and the distribution of the plots was kind of crazy. So this is actually intended to be an improvement for landowners, and for a number of landowners I've worked with, and, and laying out these plots and identifying trees to be cut, it's, it's been definitely a huge improvement. There's some other language in there that adds some clarity to how these plots are laid out, how the point system is, this point system is applied. And there are some other housekeeping changes within this section as well, just for consistency with the state, state minimum standards. There have been three new sections that have been added to the ordinance, 507 R, 507 S, and 507 T, also related to vegetation in the shoreline zone. 507 R relates to hazard trees, storm-damaged trees, and dead trees. This is a new set of standards adopted by the state in 2015, namely because the older language that the town probably still has in its current ordinance was, dare I say, horribly written, or missed the mark on really helping folks to understand what is a hazard tree, what about a storm-damaged tree, what about a dead tree, how are these treated? So this doesn't necessarily represent much of a change. There are some changes. There are some additional provisions within this, but it ultimately just clarifies what can and cannot be removed, what is a hazard tree, what is a storm-damaged tree, and when can you remove it without penalty, or when can you remove it without having to replant, et cetera? So that's actually a huge improvement for the town and for landowners as well, in my opinion. 507 S contains exemptions to the vegetation removal standards. Several of these, so this section is new, but it's a compilation of a number of existing exemptions that were already in your ordinance, or at least within the state original, state minimum standards. It just compiled them into this one, one section, so that somebody could look at that and say, oh, is this an exempt activity from the clearing? There are several new exemptions built into this section as well. Oil spill cleanup, for example, or hazardous waste cleanup, or somebody, auto accident, or a heating oil truck rolls over while they're filling a heating oil tank next to the ocean, and it, oil truck spills down in the buffer. Well, they've got to get in there to remove the soil. And for years, everybody said, yeah, that's fine, go right ahead and do what you need to do, but it technically violated the standards. So this just adds the ability, clarifies that they have the right to go in and clean up something that's going to do far more damage to the, to the water body that's trying to be protected. Also included in this exemption section is an exemption for maintenance clearing. You know, well, for years, it was, well, can I do this? Well, have you been doing this for a long time, clearing this area? Well, sure. Well, what's that mean? Well, this just clarifies what that is, and establishes that as a clear exemption for landowners. And then the last addition to this section is an exemption for the removal of non-native, non-native invasive plant species. These are plant species that are listed on a very specific list by the Department of Conservation's Maine Natural Areas Program, I think it is, where they have identified non-native invasive plants. There is some oversight, plan of some sort for revegetation needs to be submitted to the CEO for review. There, I'll leave it at that. And then section 507 T includes some revegetation requirements. This is also new, but it incorporates what had been longstanding policies for what needed to be replanted for certain types of situations, such as, what about the replanting after a oil spill cleanup? Or what about replanting for a violation that occurred? What about replanting for, you know, a bunch of hazard trees that needed to be removed so that somebody wouldn't have their house destroyed? So there are revegetation requirements added into the, into this draft ordinance, and this is all consistent with the state minimum standards. I'm going to stop there for a second and just, so that's the last I really wanted to cover for the vegetation removal standards, but I want to be clear that these standards, I think, are, are helpful to landowners to know what they can do and what they can't do, but it's also helpful to the town. Particularly, the code enforcement officer is going to field ninety-nine percent of those questions, what can I do, what can I not do? He at least will have something to point to in an ordinance to say, follow this or follow that, and you're, you're good to go. Or conversely, when somebody is maybe fired up the chainsaw prematurely, without asking the question, what can I do, what can I not do, and creates a violation, now what do you do? And it gives the town a little more support for pursuing that, whether it's just revegetation, plant a few trees here, and we call it a day, or maybe it's something more significant. The state implemented a lot of these standards on the basis that it was realized for quite a while that vegetation removal violations are probably the biggest, probably the greatest number of violations that a, a town is going to have to deal with. So they've tried to help landowners better understand by clarifying the language, excuse me, and also help the town in its administration and enforcement. All right, enough about that. There is actually one other, excuse me. I am allergic to ragweed, so that's been flowering beautifully around my house, so I apologize. Section 507 V includes a provision that allows for shoreline stabilization. Effectively, all that's really trying to point to is, it'll, does allow, well, among other things, one of the key points is that it allows for vegetation removal to occur within the shoreline buffer in order to do, conduct a shoreline stabilization project. As you might expect, there are certain limitations. It's, it's got to be limited to the extent necessary, et cetera, et cetera. Some replanting has to occur. But otherwise, without this provision, one could argue that you cannot do a stabilization project if you have to remove any vegetation in excess of the vegetation removal standards. And that's, at some point, people have to recognize that landowners should be able to stabilize their shoreline that's eroding, so they don't lose their land, they don't potentially lose their home that's sitting atop of the, the slope. So anyway, that's just a, another provision that allows for vegetation removal to conduct that type of project. Section 507 Y is a section with a number of sign standards. These are new standards for the town of Freeport. They're not new to the state. They've been in the state's requirements for many years. But the sign ordinance standards for the town of Freeport weren't fully consistent with the state minimum requirements for signs within the shoreline zone. So this section 507 Y adds shoreline zoning sign standards to the, to the ordinance as well, to comply with state requirements. Section 507 Z2C and Z2D incorporate two law provisions, statutory changes that were enacted by the legislature in, in the past few years. One is that an excavating, excavation contractor conducting their work within the shoreline zone must be certified by the Maine DEP for erosion control best management practices. So they have to demonstrate, they have to take a one-day course, I think it is, and demonstrate to the DEP that they are capable of conducting work within the shoreline zone without having a disaster of erosion into the resource, you know, when a thunderstorm hits, or, what is it, Hurricane Ida overnight tonight, hits. So contractors within the shoreline zone have to be certified. This actually is not a recent law change. This is something that came about in, I'm going to say, 2011, maybe, 2012? I may have that wrong, but it's been in, in place for, maybe even prior to that, but it's been in place for quite a few years. There's a great There was a grace period to give contractors sufficient time to take the course, get certified, before this was actually being implemented. So, it's been implemented in, in all towns for the last bunch of years, and it's just, instead of the town relying on it just being a statutory requirement, it's now formally being added to the town ordinance. This 2D photographic, there's a photographic record required with applications. That's, I think, the legislature's attempt to control what's being removed for vegetation. They wanna see some photos before and after, and they can, they'll have a, a record in the, in the municipal files, so they'll know what it looks like. So that if five years from now, they go down and it looks like a lawn down to the water, they can refer back to the photographs and say, wait a minute, we're gonna have to do some replanting. And then, my last comments are related to sections 601 and 602. These are really the administration section 601 and the site plan review section 602. A couple minor changes. There's a state requirement that when there's a variance issued by a board of appeals, that there is a reconsideration option built into that language as well. So if somebody could request a, if a board grants a variance, they could request a reconsideration of the board of appeals. And then there's a process associated with that. And then in 602, site plan review, there are just, towards the end, there's some environmental review standards that are added to be consistent with state requirements, fairly general standards. That's all I have for the highlights. Hopefully, there's at least a highlight in there too for you, and that wasn't all a bunch of lowlights, but anyway, so, that's, that's what I have. So I'd be happy to field some questions if you have any.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mike.
Very good, thank you. I'll stick around in case there are any questions.
I did wanna point out a couple of things to you before you take public comment. So first off, as Mike mentioned, the timber harvesting and how we're removing those standards. Entirely, if someone is doing timber harvesting as defined by the state, they would get a permit from the state. We did reach out to the state for a service, and they did review the language and feel like that has been adequately addressed with this proposed text in front of you. The second thing, mixed in all of this, in section 601, there was a note that if you do recommend this text, the amendments to section 601 will need to get flagged to the council, that they need to get incorporated into the new board of appeals language that you recommended at the last meeting, if that makes sense, because that's impending status. And then, you did have on the table tonight, or the board had before you, a couple text changes that I just wanna point out to you from what was posted on the website and what was in that huge stack over there. This, a lot of this came from some inquiries I had. So on page 47, section 202B, under non-conforming uses, although you weren't changing the standard, there was a standard existing that says a seasonal use shall be not converted to a year-round use. That's lovely, but it didn't define anywhere what a seasonal use was. So in parentheses, the text would add, as defined by the main subsurface wastewater disposal rules, as, that's what that's standing, or standing for. Page 48, non-conforming structures, and there's a little note, that paragraph was inadvertently omitted years ago, was added back in in 2017, just to add the word omitted back in there. Page 145, under resource protection, there's just a date-specific reference with regards to the areas in the flood zone. We have a certain set of FEMA maps, they're from 1985. They've been talking about amending them for years. Should they do that, it could be some changes with notification required, so we just wanna put a specific date in there as to what maps it's referring to, and the same thing would be suggested on the map, which we'll get to. And then page 160, there was just a omission of part of a sentence regarding determining the area regarding tree removal. It should be 25 by 50-foot rectangle area. So just some cleanup. Welcome other suggestions if you found them during your reading.
I thought actually in the omission of the word omitted might have been like an inside joke or something.
It's not an inside joke.
Yeah, I saw that, it was pretty funny. I liked it. All right, I have actually a question about the, do you know off the top of your head what the main subsurface wastewater disposal rules, what the definition of a seasonal use under those rules is?
Yes, I can pull it up.
Or basically what it is?
For you, it refers to basically the septic design that's on file for that property, which identifies how it was used at a specific point in time. I believe it's 1977 to some point in the 80s.
So basically.
Did I get that right? Eighty-five.
So if you have a house, say, with a septic system that was permitted way back then, that is adequate for, say, two bedrooms, three months a year, even if the house is insulated and what, I mean?
This is only in regards to non-conforming uses. So places where you might have a single family where it's not permitted today, really where we had most of that was in the Resource Protection 1 district. You couldn't build a house today. So if you had a single-family home there, it was non-conforming. So this would apply in a case like that. It wouldn't apply to every house in the shoreline zone. Just places where the dwelling is a non-conforming use.
Okay, so it's, it's like the dwelling itself is a non-conforming use?
Yes.
Not the existence of the dwelling within the setback?
Yes, correct.
All right, cool. That makes sense. All right, any other questions from the board?
I'll make a motion, will you open the public hearing?
Wait a second.
I'm moved.
All right, all in favor? I think we can just raise our hands now, right? We don't have to roll call. Great, the public hearing is now open. I'm assuming some of you, at least, came with some questions or wanted to voice other thoughts or opinions. So, if you would like to do so, we would be happy to recognize you. You can make your way over to the lectern and please state your name ahead of your question clearly for the record. Does that all make sense? Questions, comments from the public?
I'll start it.
Good evening.
Joyce Veyou. I live on Island View Lane off of Lower Flying Point. So my first question was gonna be about seasonal, but she took that from me. I understand it now. So my second question is on page 149. It has to do with the non-vegetative surface not being more than 20%. Obviously, whoever wrote this has never been down to the Flying Point area, where we have lots that are 50-foot by 100, that are still, this is going to make a big difference to what we can and cannot do. It's going to limit us more than the fact that we can only expand by 800 square feet and 19 feet high and all that kinda good stuff. So I believe that you will find that this state and the DEP allow for an appeal to this, and so I think that needs to be added to the list of things that can be appealed to this town board of appeals. Which is section?
601.
601, thank you. It currently is not listed there. Nope, that's it.
That's it. Other thoughts, comments from the public?
We did run legal ads and sent over 800 notices for your, your meeting tonight.
Yes, there are a lot of parts in Freeport in the shoreline district, so. Yes, of course.
Thank you for letting me ask a question. Ethan Parker, South Freeport. On page 22, under increase in non-conformity of a structure, the, the result of this seems like it's, it's allowing, and maybe this is the intent, this is kind of a question and a concern at the same time. If you have two pieces of property on the shoreline that are right next to each other, and the structures are identical to each other, except one structure has a deck or something that goes over, extends into the setback line, it seems like this section is saying that that structure can be increased for the width of that structure out to the extent that the existing non-conforming deck, let's say, does. So if I'm right about that, then I'll keep going. If I'm, if I'm wrong, then I won't waste your time. So, that seems to, to, in my, to my mind, violate the, the intended spirit of shoreline zoning, because if, if I have a house that is right up against the setback line, and boy, I would like to have that deck out front, but my, my neighbor already has that deck out front, and then he can, he or she can expand that deck to the full width of his property, I still cannot do anything. So, I'm not advocating that I would like to be able to extend into that setback just like my neighbor could. I'm just saying that why don't we just limit that neighbor to the non-conforming use they already have and not grant them the included benefit of being able to expand even more? That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd refer to Mike to clarify that definition since it's out of chapter 1000.
Yeah, he is, he's correct that a deck is considered to be part of a legal existing structure, whether it's non-conforming or conforming. So the non-conforming structure standards would apply to the deck just like it would to the rest of the house, so. The deck could not be, or the struck, overall structure could not be expanded to be any closer to the shoreline than the closest point of the structure, presumably in that example, the deck, but it could expand laterally. And that's, some of that language was added to allow for these infill expansions, if you will, as a result of a court decision back, I'm gonna say in the late 90s or early 2000s, so, anyway, but it, it would allow for that, so. And that's under the state minimum standards, so the town could be more restrictive if the town would like to be.
Any, I mean, any expansion would still be subject, I mean, if you wanted to use your, you know, expansion, whether by, you know, gross floor area or square footage or however, you know, say your 30% expansion on a deck, I mean, I guess, right, it, I mean, there's still restrictions there, and I think it's, I don't know, to me, it's the difference between a house that's, I mean, I guess it, you know, those benefits would be, you know, sort of incorporated into the value of the house and the, yeah. I, I see your point. It seems like it's a, yeah, part of the reality of homes on the water. Some are closer than others, and there are various, it's complicated, but I do see the point.
But Mike, what you're saying is the percentages or the footprint increases are still going to be applicable for the non-conforming structure?
Correct.
So you can't just add whatever you want for that area?
Right. You can't, you can't just draw a straight line in either direction and add however, however much you want.
Yeah, you have your side setbacks.
Right, you have, yeah.
You have your limits on expansion.
Right. But I think the key point is, a house that is right up against the setback but not in it, can't expand into the setback even a little bit, because that would increase the non-conformity of that house. So, yeah. So what on the surface would seem like to be very similar, and, and then you have a have and a have-not, and, yeah, no means by which to close that gap, so. Yep. Wayne, at one point, you looked like you were about to ask a question.
Well, I'm thinking, I guess one question is, is this theoretical at this point, or is there an active issue in your, in your area?
Just theoretical. I've been involved in a little bit of this on something else for the neighbor. I'm aware of this, I was curious.
Yeah, that's a good point.
For the record, the answer was that it's mostly theoretical at this stage, just because there's no microphone over there.
It's entirely theoretical.
Okay. But yes, a good, I think a good, a good example that kinda cuts to part of the heart of this. Other thoughts, questions from the public? All right.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you all for being here. Thoughts on those comments from the board? Thoughts from the board on the comments from the public?
I'll start, Sam. I, I think it's a substantial edit to our ordinances and great work by the staff and everybody involved, and overall good refinement to our ordinances that makes us consistent with state standards, and nothing is, is too offensive to me as I read through it.
Yeah. I think the first comment about listing, listing the vegetation or the lot, was it lot coverage?
Lot coverage.
Yeah, sorry, lot coverage requirements as part of the appeals seems like a fairly straightforward, though, I, can you speak to the technical aspects of that a little bit more, Caroline?
Yes, so you could incorporate that into the changes before you tonight. If you do that, it will have to kinda be flagged to the council that it needs to get flagged into the pending language. As you know from the last meeting, the pending language makes our board, section 601 pertaining to the board of appeals and enforcement consistent with state law. So the options in there are going to be a variance, in which case you need to prove hardship, variance for a single family, which it clearly calls out you can't do for a lot coverage, or disability variance. So if you were gonna add lot coverage, the place that you could add it would be under the variance provisions. It does add an option, but a variance is a really
Right.
hard test to me. You have to, there's a couple different, four or five different standards. You have to prove that you meet a hardship and essentially have no other use of the property. It is a difficult test, but at the same time, if you don't put it in, there's no option. I think everybody is aware that variance is the only option, and it's a hard test, but if you put it there, at least, you know, there's a choice. It would involve going to a board of appeals, anything they did in the shoreline would have to notify DEP, essentially, they'd have to sign off on it, but I think, yes, you could under, Wade wanna do is on this document you have in front of you, page 252, on the last paragraph under 2B, except for specifically limited or prohibitive variances, may be authorized only for a minimum setback, minimum building height to lot ratio, and then you could put in lot coverage, comma. And then it would just continue on with the list of other items there. But yes, it is something that you could put in there per chapter 1000.
All right, sorry, one more time, 252.
252, second sentence down, I would say maximum building slash lot ratio, comma, lot coverage, comma, and then it goes on parking requirements, et cetera.
And is there, I mean, would the state just use a different method, like a scaled method of lot determining lot coverage, if the lot is not big enough to use that?
Not that I'm aware of. The definition is the definition, and the standard says what is and isn't included.
So if your lot is smaller than that, you can't just use like the 80% version of that?
Yeah, there's no exceptions to that rule, correct, Mike?
Okay.
Well, I might, just as an edit, I might have found a typo, Caroline.
Okay.
Definitions, campgrounds, proposed language. I think there's an is that should be an in, but maybe I'm, my grammar's not correct.
Uh, where?
Uh, page 13, campgrounds, two or more parties in temporary living quarters.
Yep.
The other thoughts or questions?
I think it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long road to, I mean, not a huge amount of involvement from the board, but I know the staff has been working hard on it.
Question from Mike. Have most coastal towns already adopted the state changes from 2015, or is it difficult to say?
Yeah, it's a very big, you want me to use a mic here?
Yeah, I guess that's the proper thing.
That's a, that's a good question, and not being a DEP employee dealing with that sort of thing, I can only speak from my experience as a consultant, and I would say most have already gone through this process, most coastal southern Maine towns at least have. I don't really service areas really up, up above, you know, close to Augusta, but in south, but most southern Maine coastal towns have already gone through this. In fact, for that matter, most coastal, most southern Maine towns inland or coastal have already gone through this process. You aren't the last town standing.
I believe there's talk of some additional amendments that might come out of DEP in the near future. Is that still correct, Mike, or is?
I'm sorry?
My understanding was that DEP is now considering additional standards that they might roll out?
It's a great question. Every, there are lots of rumors floating around. My understanding is there has been some discussion about it, but it's, it hasn't been made clear to me that they're actually going to move forward with that process right off, but they may start it tomorrow, for all I know.
So if the board wanted to make a motion on this tonight, to make a recommendation to the council, you know, you'd want to make the recommendation, specifically note the date on the document before you, any amendments, incorporating any amendments presented at the meeting. Your finding would need to be that you find it consistent with, you know, the state shoreline zoning, and then, you know, if you want to also add reference in there to the comp plan and protecting environmentally sensitive areas, or water quality, whatever else you want to do, you can do that, but with shoreline zoning, we really do it because we need to be consistent with that state regulation. And you do have it on here separately, the map and the zoning ordinance are two different documents, there are two separate public hearings that will need to take up separately and act on separately.
All right. So, yeah, I think in the interest of being compliant, it makes sense to move forward. Does somebody want the really exciting job of crafting and reading a motion?
Why is everyone looking at Aaron?
He's really good.
Because Aaron hasn't, you know.
It's a talent.
Okay, I'll take a stab at this. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend.
Do you want the agenda? That might be the best.
And then just add some stuff, how it matches the comprehensive plan?
We recommend changes to Town of Freeport zoning ordinance as proposed, dated September 1, 2021, as amended with attachments included for members in the public tonight. In that, well, let me get specific. The changes relate to the following sections, Section 104 definitions, Section 201 general restrictions, Section 202 nonconformance, Section 203 changes and amendments, Section 302 zoning map, Section 303 zoning district boundaries, Section 304 map corrections, dash shoreline zone and resource protection district to be repealed, Section 401 purpose and land use controls, Section 402 rural residential district 1 and rural residential district 1A, Section 403 rural residential district 2, Section 409 commercial district 1, Section 422 industrial district 2, Section 426 an island district, Section 507 shoreline zone regulations, Section 601 enforcement, and Section 602 site plan review. And that is the end of my motion, I believe.
Did we get that addition to the?
Did that work, Caroline?
Addition for adding the lot coverage to the appeals process?
With the noted addition from Joyce VU relating to the appeals of the lot coverage for vegetation, was that?
Yeah, we have that, and then just the spelling correction definition of campground.
And the, and the edit to the typo in the campground definition is to in.
Did you tie it to the comp plan or shoreline zoning? Sorry, it was so long.
In that, in that, it is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, or in the spirit of the town's comprehensive plan, in that it is consistent with protecting our shoreline zoning areas and in being environmentally responsible. Does that work?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Great, thanks for taking one for the team there.
Did good.
That might have been the longest one ever.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can't imagine or remember a longer.
I would beg for, in the past, we've had suggested motions that would connect more.
Okay. Well, thanks to the members of the public again coming out tonight. But, but wait, there's more. We're on to item number three, which again will be a public hearing. Proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the Town of Freeport, again pertaining to shoreline zoning. The boundaries of the shoreline zone as regulated by state law will be updated. Many areas previously designated as Resource Protection 1 are being amended to shoreline area. Areas within coastal floodplains will remain in Resource Protection, however, will not be shown on the map as the boundaries will be based upon the FEMA flood insurance rate maps as adopted by the town council.
Okay, so I'll give you an overview if you have technical questions on how we have to draw stuff under the shoreline zoning then, or for the Mike. We have a copy of the map over there, it was posted online, I can put it on screen if needed, but I'll just kind of walk you through. So first off, I got to give credit to Cecilia, our assistant planner, although this map looks pretty simplistic on paper, it's very time consuming, and there's a lot of technical detail and yelling at the computer involved in it. So thank you to her because she put a lot of time into this product. So back in 2013, when I think we last did shoreline zoning, we digitized our zoning map, and we haven't really updated it since then. So we did a little cleanup. Since the 2013 map, the planning board has made a few changes which have been incorporated into this, but aren't pertaining to shoreline zoning, but I'll tell you what they are. This map shows the V1R district, which is in the area of Cottage and Forest Street, that's now shown on the digital map. The nature base art and overlay district is now shown on the map. The, back, I think a year or two ago, we made an amendment to the map to remove the coastal bluffs so that you actually have to go to the data source of the geological survey maps because we found that we weren't upkeeping our data, people were taken, unstable bluffs were not identified on their property, but we still showed them, so it was a limiting factor for our property owners. With regards to the shoreline zoning, the intent was that a lot of the data stayed the same, but we did meet with DEP and we did have to do some cleanup to draw things correctly. So the biggest change you have before you, which we've already talked about, is the fact that we can take out a lot of that protected bird habitat out of Resource Protection 1 and into shoreline zoning. So it used to be very restrictive in dark blue, now it has the blue hatch line over it. The second change is we did have to just kind of clean up the way the streams were shown and the boundaries of the wetland. The standards were still in effect, the rules were still the same, but they weren't drawn correctly. So we did have a little bit of cleanup, mostly like at the ends of the streams. You'll notice the shape around Florida Lake was corrected. There is one area in the amendment package before you tonight, on the top left, it's so small you can't see it, but whoever owns that property, it will matter to them, it's shown a shoreline zoning, and it does not need to be, it's up on the Durham line, there's a little blue hatch mark there, so that can be removed. The other dis, change you'll see here is when you looked at the old map, along the coastline, there's like this thin blue line, which was Resource Protection, and what that really was, was the area on the floodplain. We have realized that there's some inaccuracies in our data, there were some inaccuracies in the elevation, and so we were showing people in Resource Protection, but it wasn't always accurate. We reached out to DEP and we asked if we could instead reference that if you're in a tidal area and a floodplain, that you're in Resource Protection 1. So really, the floodmaps haven't changed, so that shouldn't change for our residents, but rather the way that we're showing it. We do have a specific reference to the current FEMA maps, which are from 1985. We talked about that being incorporated into the text because we suspect at some point that FEMA is going to update the maps, and we might have, we'll have to revisit the zoning map and our own Resource Protection zoning at that point in time. So you do have a note amendment that was on a handout tonight, just to clarify, Note 2 regarding the floodplains. And I think that covers it, but I'm happy to answer questions. If you have more questions about the technical details, distances from certain features that we have to protect, Mike can also answer questions. And this also is a public hearing.
Any questions from the board? Mike, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Sure.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, the floodplain that would be subject to Resource Protection is only within the shoreline zone and is limited to the 100-year floodplain. Some of the FEMA floodplain maps, the firms actually show the 500-year floodplain in some instances, so this would only apply to Resource Protection up to the 100-year floodplain extent.
Do I hear a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, public hearing is now open. Questions, comments, concerns from the public? Anyone?
Good evening. Peter Shepherd from Morgana Way and Lower Flying Point. Just a question on the island district and how far your authority extends over that for clarification. Do the ordinance just pertain to on-land building structures, vegetation removal, or does it include any of the surrounding waters? Some of the language in that kind of says that it extends beyond into the waters.
Coastal waters will come into play for certain waters. The zoning ordinance pertains to the land and that shore setback. Mike, can you add further clarification onto the water regulation and who gets involved when?
So I know that they were striking out on some sections in there, I don't recall that, like Coastal Waters Commission had to, on one of, Table 1, Coastal Water Commission had to, you know, approve docks, piers, wharfs, and the like, and that language has been, that was struck, struck out in this amendment.
That actually is still, we tried track changing the table and it was a disaster, nobody could read it. So we took out the old table, but the language that was still validated and added to it. So Coastal Waters will still have authority currently over the piers, docks, and wharfs.
Floats and the like.
Floats, yep, the same purview that they had before.
They do, because it looked like it was left with the review board, planning review board, but not with the Coastal Waters. It was actually struck.
Are you talking about piers, docks, wharfs, or a separate heading?
Oh, for permanent non-title has PRB, but temporary and permanent title still go to Coastal Waters, temporary non-title go to the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, it was struck in the old table, and it is, it does appear again in the new table. And this is again not on.
And we don't have the language for piers, docks, and wharfs in here because they're in, currently in the Coastal Waters ordinance?
Is it true that anything low watermark and in, you know, is, is under the jurisdiction of the state? That's, that's?
Low water and, oh.
You mean, high?
Yeah, or high.
So like the shoreline, like all of these setbacks that we've been talking about are from?
The highest, well, they can be from the highest annual type, or the unstable.
Right, depending on if it's stable or unstable. So anything under the jurisdiction of these ordinances is on land. Anything in the intertidal zone is outside of?
That's the state, I believe, is that correct?
It seems a little inconsistent because it says protect the island district and surrounding waters, which would be, like, language kind of would infer that your authority would go over, you know, into the intertidal zone.
Is that under the purpose of island district they may be referring to?
If you read our, the description of the island district, I think you'll, you would see that that language is in there.
Yes, I think that, my interpretation of that language, and I wish, Frank, I wish it weren't the case, but I think the interpretation is, or as I read it, is, you know, protect the waters by protecting what's on the land, you know, because I think the jurisdiction of the, of the zoning is still what's on land.
And it is, he does make the point, in the island, in the island district only, piers, docks, and wharves do go to project review board as they do today, and they're under Coastal Waters currently. We're not proposing to change that with this, but it could be something looked at in the future and has been flagged.
But it's just, that's just piers, docks, and wharfs that are attached to?
And just in that island district.
So if there's something that is a temporary, well, that, I mean, because you get, then you get into the definition of what's temporary and what's permanent.
Yeah, there was some discussion about looking at how we're doing piers, docks, and wharves as a community, but that needs to be a separate, bigger discussion, and if that happens, would be a further amendment process later.
That's why I always assumed it was low, low watermark, because the, you know, the pier is extended to basically with the low watermark, and then from then on, you're under the state's jurisdiction.
Yep.
But, you know, that would only apply to piers.
Yeah, if you're out in the middle of the bay, or if you're in the intertidal zone.
If you're in the island district itself, which is defined.
You're asking where, where the island district ends and begins, yeah.
And it seems like the ordinance that's drafted the way it is, it says the island district, which ends surrounding waters, which would include more than just the land.
No, I don't think it can.
And that seems similar.
Right, that's, yeah, and I, I think you bring up a good point in the, in the description of the district, but I think the, I don't know, how do I, I, legally, we don't have the.
I think so, too.
Yes, it's supposed to be a generic statement, but he's saying it might not be a generic, it might not be an accurate description the way
Yeah.
that purpose of the island district is written.
I think the description doesn't align with the legal reality of it.
And also, the clarification on who is going. And also the clarification on who is going, like, whether or not the Coastal Water, I know you're not the Coastal Waters Commission, that you're, you're removing or, you know, like, or editing whether or not they have to have approval on it. And to me, I think that, you know, there's, seems inconsistent. Because if you read Article 32, the Coastal Waters Commission, it doesn't seem like they're aligned with what you're saying.
Coast.
Table One.
Coastal Waters ordinance does need some cleanup, but yes, they have the authority today in their current ordinance to do that. And then further, the zoning ordinance adds that second requirement in that Island District that you were referring to, Section 426, that it goes to project review. But I think you could flag that, you know, purpose, really probably of all the zoning districts to look at and clean up and make sure it's accurately reflecting the standards below and supporting our comp plan.
I think the point is, is that if we adhere to these regulations on the island, we are in, we are protecting the larger surrounding area. I think that was the whole, the point, but.
Right.
It should be clarified.
And I think it's a, I think it's a very good point that, that, right, I mean, I, who, who is in charge of protecting the waters that directly impact the residents of Freeport? I think is the, right? Is that accurately stated?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, and right now, it seems like it's a big old gray area and there's nobody in charge. And so you can kind of weave your way through and basically get away with all kinds of fun stuff out there. Um, and I, I think that a lot of people, myself included, feel like we should probably clean that up. But I'm not sure how, you know, I, I don't, I guess I don't know exactly where the, the planning board's jurisdiction begins and ends in that process.
If we're talking about Coastal Waters ordinance, that's a separate standalone ordinance that would go through Ordinance Committee. If you change that, it could be intertwined with the zoning ordinance, which case you'd get involved, but yeah, there are two separate documents by two separate bodies.
So ultimately, it's the zoning committee?
No, there is an ordinance committee, which is the committee of the council.
Ordinance committee.
And then it would go to council.
That would be in charge of strengthening or reworking the Coastal Waters purview to accurately legis, or accurately.
Updated or, yes, accurately reflect, whatever.
Bring, bring the, bring the Coastal Waters under, under more of Freeport's jurisdiction or.
I guess that would be something.
Cleaning up their standards.
Together, correct? Or you would be a part of that?
Um, to the degree that whatever happened in that ordinance impacted this ordinance. The planning board doesn't have purview over the Coastal Waters ordinance, but it would have to be a collaboration. Because if we're gonna up, if we're gonna update that one for the piers, docks and morph, it's, has to be consistent with the DEP standards for that. Yes, it's all intertwined.
Is a wharf, for the purposes, I mean, is something that's floating out in the middle, is that a wharf?
I'm not going to quote the Coastal Waters ordinance, I'm not sure how it, how it defines it.
They actually stipulate wharfs and floats.
Floats, okay.
Yeah, they have a couple definitions.
That's a float, yeah.
Subcategory of, or whatever.
And it's not attached to the, to a land.
Attached to the bottom.
Right, right.
So is that something that, would you be taking any action on to recommend, or would that be something that has to be outside of your purview?
Um, it's outside of this board's purview. I'd reach out to either Coastal Waters, you could reach out to the manager's office.
Kind of, it's kind of, we've done kind of a little bit of that in a way and everybody's pointing the other way.
I'd be happy to reach out to if you want to leave your name and number on my counter when you leave tonight.
Certainly, I will.
Or could the, could the board, could the planning board refer this issue to the, suggest that the ordinance committee take it up?
Yeah, we could put it, so I always put a staff memo, I could note that it came up at the meeting that
That'd be wonderful.
We should reexamine the Coastal Waters to make sure it aligns.
I'm very glad this issue came up. Thank you, Peter, for, for bringing it up. And I think, yeah, if, if you hadn't, it was actually something I would, I wanted to bring up at the, at the end here, which I think is, yeah, I, you know, that a big part of being in Freeport and being on the water is the experience of the water for a lot of people, or, you know.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Um, and yeah, I think, I think there's a sense of wanting, not necessarily control, but at least wanting a say in what's happening, you know, just off the.
You're just limited to where you're in federal and under federal and state jurisdictions, you know.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think the process is not, not very clear. And I think there are ways, there are ways in which the, the process could be made more clear so that people can navigate it, so.
In the letter to the council, the cover letter that goes along with the ordinance recommendation and whatever you decide on the map.
Caroline, before you go there, may I?
Please.
What, again, Joyce Vayou, Island View Lane, on the shore. One of the things that we need to look at it as a town is that, it is my understanding that the Corps of Engineers has designated certain waters as Freeport waters, certain waters as Jarmouth, et cetera. Every town on the coast has jurisdiction over certain waters. And that's one of the reasons that we have a harbor master and he is a police officer and he has a boat and it has lights and et cetera. And he can go out there and he can stop speeders and drunks and, and help protect our waters. Well, when somebody is putting up structures in our waters, whether they be tidal or non-tidal, then isn't it the preview of this board to look at how we do this and what structures we allow where in our different zones?
I think you could argue that it should be.
I think it should be.
But it is not currently.
I think it's time that we stand up and try to make it ours.
That's a fair point, but I think we, there's, there's a process that we have to, you know, today, unfortunately, that is not the case. So I think the point is well taken, that it, it should be somebody's responsibility to have some say in that. And I think it's great to hear the town starting to stand up and say, hey, these things are happening in the waters, we need to figure out what to do about it. Because I 100% agree, we have to figure out what to do about it.
It's also my understanding that right now, our own harbor master does not even have the authority to inspect and, um, issue tickets, um, that all the oyster farms and the aquaculture that's going on out there. That only the Marine Patrol can do that. And the Marine Patrol is so stretched right now up and down the coast that we've got 50 leases in Freeport waters, 50. And they're not looked at. So they're doing whatever they want.
I think those are leases with the state, I believe.
With UMR.
And so, yeah, so I, I don't know how we would, you know.
Right, there's, there's a, a gap, I think, in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Enforcement and the process.
Okay, so we want to just note that based upon public discussion, concerns were raised about regulating, regulations pertaining to the water off Freeport's coast. And in particular, we should at least be looking at municipal coastal waters regulations.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
We have another member of the public, I think, who would like to speak?
Thanks, I'm Hank Sol with Little Bustin's Island. Just a quick comment on that point that you just made. I work in the commercial fishing industry at the federal level and on the state level as well. And, uh, what the federal government does, law enforcement agencies, the National Fishery Service Office of Law Enforcement, because they're overwhelmed as well, they contract with state fisheries officers, the Marine, Marine Patrol to cover some of the enforcement, federal enforcement duties. And I think you could perhaps do the same thing in this situation, is that the Marine Patrol could contract with your harbor master, for instance, to enforce some of these aquaculture ordinances if you have concerns that they're being violated and that helps with the manpower situation.
That's all.
So the process might be to go to the state and say, hey, we understand that you're overstretched.
And if your harbor master has the time.
Has the capacity.
You might be able to enter an agreement with them. And I think certainly on the federal level, it's a reimbursable agreement.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That helps?
Yeah.
Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
I, I think that it'd be great for looking at it from an enforcement level. I'm sorry, I'll wait. But it, but the, but the real thing is that these are Freeport's waters as designated, you know, with, with the Corps of Engineers. And we have responsibilities to make sure that there is, you know, the right protections are in place. And it's so easy to, like, look at all the regu, you have 400 and something pages of, of, you know, regulations that pertain to the land, yet we don't have anything in our town that pertains to the water. That is, that, that what we have is, you know, people pointing in other directions. And there's some serious things happening. There's over 50, there's more than 50 that have already been approved by the state that are active and out there. There's at least six more that are pending of aquaculture leases. And there, there are a lot of concerns that people have as they're popping up all over Casco Bay. You can't turn around an island if you're on a boat. There are hazards to navigation, there's issues with riparian rights. And the, the town of Freeport is kind of like washing their hands of it, it seems like. I apologize to be so critical, but it seems like no one has stood up to the fact that these are Freeport waters, there's an Island District and there's a lot of unregulated stuff happening out there.
My very limited understanding from aquaculture, because it's clearly been a hot topic in Freeport lately, is that the state has informed us that we have very little involvement in the regulation of those aquaculture operations in the water. But it's still something we can flag, it's definitely on the radar, as there are some other water furnace issues that we're having.
Thank you.
So it is, I mean, it, in theory, the waters are the jurisdiction of the Coastal Waters Commission, but the aquaculture piece of it is outside of that and at the state level?
My, that is my understanding that the aquaculture in the water is under state jurisdiction. But I'm not an expert, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert, I focus on the land use ordinances. I think, you know, we can flag it, we can note there's concern at this hearing.
I think, I think the discussion is a good first step and, and see where, what kind of answers we can get.
Caroline, do you know if the town has ever received a complaint along, along these lines from anybody?
I think we just did.
Well, aside from, aside from tonight.
Um, well, they, honestly, they wouldn't come through planning, so I'm not sure, but I know there's been a lot of inquiries, I'm assuming there's been some complaints to the manager's office, but I don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I think, uh, Peter is absolutely right. I mean, it's, you know, they're, they are popping up all over the place. And it, it does seem like it's, you know, there, there's the Island Districts, there's the land, there's all this stuff in between. And is it really totally outside of the town's jurisdiction? Maybe it is now, but should it be? I don't know. I think it's, and then, of course, the next question is how do you make a, how do you make a deliverable out of that? How do you not just say, huh, I don't know? I mean, what's the next, you know, what's the next step? So, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's going to the state, going to the DMR and saying, you know, the towns, the towns are not.
See, it's currently at IFR purview and I think we are in the middle of a public hearing on the map.
Yes, that's true. We're definitely off topic.
Um, and Mike, you didn't want to add something?
Mike, yeah. Of course.
Um, a couple, a couple of quick notes. And unfortunately, I don't have the Coastal Waters Commission's ordinance in front of me tonight. Otherwise, I'd take a look at that. But ordinarily, um, in, in most town Shoreland zoning ordinances, you'd see, excuse me, the authority granted to the town under the applicability section that establishes the Shoreland Zone at least, um, 250 feet from the highest annual tide lines, say, in Coastal Waters. And 75 feet from streams and also extending the jurisdiction out below for piers, docks, wharves and other structures and uses extending below the normal high water line or highest annual tide. I'm guessing where the Coastal Waters Commission seems to regulate those structures and uses. To some extent, they must have some foundational language in their ordinance or somewhere in a town ordinance that would establish that jurisdiction. I also just want to quickly call to note, and this is not one of the changes that I, I had implemented into the, into the Shoreland zoning ordinance, but the land use table, Table One, in the Shoreland ordinance, listed aquaculture, since this is being discussed as a Coastal Waters Commission use, or review, I should say, where is the proposed table, uh, Table One land uses in the Shoreland Zone, gives that authority across the board to the, I think that's Planning Review Board.
Yeah, Project Review Board.
A Project Review, Review Board, thank you. So.
But it would, but that's interesting because that's not what the state is telling us, it sounds like.
We have aquaculture as a permitted use in here on land.
Right.
That is subject to site plan review, so if someone had a.
This is like a different.
Building fish farm.
Right, and on land.
Very vague provision in the Coastal Waters ordinance. Yeah, you know, we looked at the aquaculture, I mean, currently, like, aquaculture on land in the areas it's permitted, I was kind of surprised it's been that way for a long time, but.
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, we're, I guess we are slightly off topic, although we are talking about the boundaries of the zoning map in a sense of it. So to try to steer the ship slightly back on course, do we have any other questions, concerns with the updated town of Freeport zoning map?
Did you open the hearing?
We did, we did, a long time ago.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, public hearing is now closed. Thank you again to the public for coming out and participating. Um, any other thoughts? Anything to change, or do we? Somebody other than Aaron want to take a stab at this one?
Please.
I want my glasses, so there is a wood.
I can't, so.
You have to pass it down there.
I mean, this, this motion really just needs to be to.
Basically just read that.
Yeah. Update the boundaries of the Shoreland Zone as regulated by state law. I mean, basically just read the, read the agenda item and find it to be in harmony with the state law, basically.
Yeah, I think you would just want to note, um, you know, the map presented at the 920, 91, sorry, Planning Board meeting with amendments as discussed.
Comp plan, any suggestions, Caroline?
Um, I don't know.
We tie it to that?
You have to do it as part of Shoreland zoning, so I think you can just stop at that, consistent with Shoreland zoning requirements. You have to have a Shoreland zoning map and they need to review and approve it.
Well, in the absence of any volunteers.
I can do it, Aaron, if you want to.
Okay, Anna, thank you.
So it be moved that we make proposed amendments to the official zoning map for the town of Freeport on September 1st, 2021. The boundaries of the Shoreland Zone as regulated by state law will be updated. Many areas previously designated as Resource Protection One are being amended to Shoreland area. Areas within coastal flood plans, plains will remain in Resource Protection, however, will not be shown on the map as the boundaries will be based upon the FEMA flood insurance rate maps as adopted by the town council. Um, and this is to be in accordance with state law and environmental protection under Shoreland Resource Protection.
Go ahead, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Anna, thank you, everyone. So those are on to the council, those changes. And Caroline, in our letter, we will note the concerns that were brought up at this hearing as well.
Yep, pertaining to water regulations and Coastal Waters. And I think as far as like the description for the Island District, I would say that might be something that this board wants to look at, you know, for all the zones are in entirety.
I think it's a good idea.
My guess is like, whenever we have amendments, it's typically not to that. So a lot of that text has probably been there and people haven't given a lot of time and energy into, you know, updating it. We don't want to change the intent of anything, especially if it's consistent with our current comp plan. Um, and you know, a new comp plan that you guys are going to undertake fairly soon here. But we could definitely do some maintenance and cleanup if it's not accurately reflecting what's there.
Does this line, Caroline, does that designate like Freeport?
Um, that's just kind of a boundary that is part of the map. It is, is there for lack of better, better description, it doesn't serve an official purpose. You know, any property lines shown on the zoning map are based off of text maps, which are always. property lines shown on the zoning map are based off of text maps, which are always in approximation for assessing purposes only. So you guys are done shoreline. I'm sure Mike is having a blast here, but do you need him for anything else? Or are we gonna, you're gonna move on to remote participation?
I just wanted to say sorry for interrupting your.
Thank you, though. This was very helpful.
Very helpful indeed. And we know it's been a long project, and we appreciate the completion of it. Or we hope that, I guess, it's officially complete when the council adopts, so we'll.
Not till DEP approves it.
Okay, cheesy, longer. But thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Item number four is a public hearing on proposed remote participation policy for this board.
Yes.
Yeah, so we talked about this at the last meeting. It used to be that boards couldn't meet virtually. You know, there's been some good things, I think, about the pandemic. You guys have definitely had a lot of people participating on the computer. You know, we picked up a different audience. I, to me, this is like the perfect storm of public participation in a good way, because we have people that like to come and do it in person, and then we have people like to do it on Zoom. So state law change, you can adopt a policy. Each board and committee has to have a public hearing. They have to adopt their own policy. So this was noticed in the paper. Essentially, what you have here is a draft policy that came out of the municipal association, was adopted by the town council. This will allow the public and board members to participate remotely. The intent of the board, for the board, is that you will always be here. But if you're traveling or out of town, or if you're in quarantine, you know, extreme circumstances, and you can't be here, then this will allow you to be, participate remotely as a voting board member. It's not designed for you to stay home because it's raining and you don't want to get wet, or because you want to avoid confrontation with the public on a touchy issue. It's really, you know, for extreme cases, I expect that we'll all still be sitting here for the most part. However, it does, if you have, if any one of you has to participate remotely, you have to give the option for the public as well. This is a policy adopted by the council, and their thought is they want to have a hybrid meeting, meaning you guys will be here, public will be here, there'll be people on the screen. So we'll be able to see them at home, and they'll be participating using Zoom or something like that. So this will allow all of that to happen. You do need to have a public hearing, and then you can take action on it. Last thing to note is that if we're going to go hybrid, this policy says we'll do that as much as we can unless there's a technology issue. Right now, there's a technology issue. We're waiting for parts, so we can't go hybrid in this room. But as soon as we can do that with this policy in place, we will start doing that.
Any questions from the board on this policy? We did talk about it last.
I have one question. I'm just confused by this sentence. The, I think it's the fourth paragraph. The public will be provided a meaningful opportunity to attend via remote methods unless technically not possible, and when any member of the body participates via remote methods. Is that saying, like, if, it seems like it's saying they can only, the public can only participate remotely if a board member is participating remotely?
Thank you. That's how it originated, but the council did this. They added that first sentence you read because they want to always offer it. So that's how we are. However, if that TV breaks and we can't offer the hybrid option, we're still going to have a meeting. We just, if technology will not allow, then the public's not going to be able to participate that way.
I see.
Best efforts.
Best efforts will be that you always offer both options.
Okay.
Hybrid and in person.
It never says, it doesn't directly say that. It just says this weird sentence.
Because the state law doesn't say you have to, like, offer it all the time, but the intention of the council was to offer it all the time. So they added that language in here, but it could still read, you know, a little bit wonky. I mean, it's your policy. You can tweak it at minimum. If you, if one of you has the opportunity, then the public does. I mean, you could only offer that opportunity to the public when one of you is remote.
No, that's not what I want at all. I just want it to be clear.
I'm just clarifying that you could do that if that's what you choose.
I think it's best to always let the public have this opportunity, right? The more engagement we get from them, the better.
Participation is what we need to encourage.
Yeah.
It's just confusing the way this reads. I read that to mean.
Sorry, can you point it out to me?
No, it's the fourth paragraph. It's the fourth, it's the fourth sentence. I'm sorry, the fourth paragraph, the first sentence, something like, the public will be provided a meaningful tend.
Yeah, okay.
Remote methods and in public, when, whenever it's technically possible.
It almost reads like if, yeah.
If any of us is remote.
Then the public has.
The public is going to be remote.
And that's how it reads, but it shouldn't.
But if all of us are in person, then we do not necessarily have to offer a remote public participation option.
Right, but you guys want to.
Yes.
Yes.
I think if it's possible and the cost is reasonable, why not?
Yeah, we had a lot of concerns kind of at the beginning about the, you know, the technology part of it, but it seems like those were mostly, you know, figured out.
And look at how many digital hands were raised when we were on Zoom.
So I, I guess you could kind of break it up a little bit. It might read better. The public will be provided with a meaningful opportunity to attend via remote methods.
Period.
Or we could say, at all meetings unless technically not possible, period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, let me.
When any member of the body participates via remote, I don't think it's even.
Well, I don't know if we have to have that under state laws. So if, if that breaks, but one of you are on the phone, we have to have everybody on the phone. So I think we do need to somehow note that if there's an, like, if that's broken, but we have you call in, then we need to make sure we give that opportunity to everybody else.
Everybody's needs to be able to call in.
But wouldn't we already do that if we're giving them that option to participate remotely?
That's the, that's the out. Everyone should always have the opportunity, so then it doesn't matter.
That leads to the question that I was going to ask, which is, what's the discretion of board members to, to be remote? Because, you know, there, you mentioned a couple of examples. Raining outside is not a good, not a good reason, but some kind of medical emergency would be a good reason. But what I, what I'm thinking is that, you know, COVID is going up and down, and we don't know what the state of transmit, community transmission will be at any given point in time. And if somebody has a concern about being here in person because things look pretty bad, is that an individual decision, or do we have to decide as a board?
It did cross my mind. I don't feel like this is clear. I feel like depending where COVID goes, we might need to get legal guidance if a board member is not comfortable participating. I could definitely see that. I mean, in this case, like, if one of you wasn't, we could at least still have a meeting if everyone else was. I think we'll have to handle that COVID situation on a case by case basis, because it's not clear. And again, if it gets bad enough, like, in the past COVID situations and the governor's emergency order, it was very clear that you could, that was a very valid reason to do that.
So will, will a board, let's say we, we adopt that policy, will an individual board member participate remotely even if the rest are going to be here in person? Is that something we'll accommodate going forward?
Yes. So if you're away for work and you're in California and you can't be here tonight, yes, you and the public could be on Zoom on the screen, and the rest of us would be sitting.
That's very helpful. Same for a health concern, for a COVID concern, let's say.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, to me, that's an emergency or urgent issues, illness or temporary illness. I mean, I.
I mean, it's a good point, because like, the school that my kids go to right now, they have like very strict guidelines about like how much you're supposed to be inside with people outside of your household, even with masks on. So it's.
I mean, you don't have to adopt this tonight. We don't have the technology in place yet. So if you want me to get some legal guidance to clarify, like, the COVID situation, and if we can strike out that member of the body, we can do that. If you don't want to act on it tonight, I would just ask that you formally table it, because then we don't have to do all the, we have that notification. The action was tabled, and someone can take, you know, would be here or watching if they were interested to take it up.
We don't have the, we don't have the technology to implement this right now, right?
Correct.
So we might as well table, let them try and.
So if we table it, then, then you get the answers, and we don't have to re-notify for a public hearing? Is that what you're?
Yep, yep. I mean, if, if I'm doing a public hearing, which you could have some action in October, I just put it in there anyways. It's not a big deal, but.
My, my main point would just be to make it really clear that the public can participate both remotely and in person every time unless something happens technologically.
Yeah. And so I have that first sentence circled. We'll clarify if we can strike or what we have to have for reference to a member of a body participating remotely, and then we'll see if we can get some clarity on the COVID situation if we're not comfortable sitting in a public meeting.
Do we have to officially open and close the public hearing on this, which we have not yet done?
We sure do.
Okay.
What did you say before?
So we have to, for this particular item, so we have to open and close the public hearing. Do we table it while the public hearing is open, or do we?
Nope.
These are really good questions. This is exciting.
If we table it, why should there be a public hearing?
Because the public has to be, because, yeah, because the public has to be in the hearing.
Yeah, I think you need to table, yeah, I think you're right. I think you need to move to table the public hearing till the.
Do we have to open and close the public hearing first?
No, I think you can just table it.
Don't want to get it wrong and then re-notify, that's all.
Yeah. You should be able to just table it, you know.
But there's no one here.
I know, that should be.
Hold on.
Right, you know, I recognize, it's fully preposterous, yeah.
Who are we talking to?
It's a good point. There was a substantial public notice that went out for this meeting. And I'm wondering if we take action on this tonight and with a motion, and then we can change it down the road? But I imagine that would also require.
Yeah, that would require.
Back to square one. I do love the public process, though.
Definition for junkyard? It's the longest definition. Very interesting.
I think the spirit is, we want to strongly encourage in-person participation.
What if we just?
Board members and the public.
I mean, I think you could.
I don't know. I don't think we'd have to say.
I think you could do, do the public hearing, open and close it, but then you could table action on it. Because you did notice the public hearing. You had ample people here tonight. So you could notice it, but then table action to the next meeting. And on the next agenda, I'll say, public hearing held this date, tabled.
We're not going to make substantive changes. We're just looking for legal.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Would any members of the public?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? All right. So do I hear a motion to table action on this amendment pending legal review on the sort of spirit that we've presented, which is allowing full participation from the public at any time and remote, or full remote participation from the public at any time and remote participation from the board in extreme cases?
And clarification as to how this applies when a board member is not comfortable meeting in person due to the COVID pandemic.
Yes, it could be the whole board, or the discretion of individual members of the board would be my clarification.
Do I hear a motion to table?
Make a motion to table this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this item has been tabled. Item five, persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items.
I'll just give you a little cheat sheet of what you might have coming, so you all want to come next month. So we are going to have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll have an update on the vision. We're trying to finalize dates for Vision Downtown Design Week. We'll have dates. We're going to have venues for public meetings. I would say, till we get to that time, status will be pending. We're hoping to provide a hybrid option in case people aren't interested in gathering. But we'll give you a schedule when it's finalized, so you can see what you want to participate in and what you don't. They're going to, basically, this week of open houses, there'll be certain topics that, so if, like, housing's of interest to you, you can go listen to the housing conversation or ADA access, or, you know, whatever it might be. You might see some amendments pertaining to noise regulations. The ordinance committee just made a recommendation to put some regulations in place for noise for certain construction things. There's been a request to have the Planning Board look at making those part of zoning and/or subdivision. They're currently at the attorney for input. So you might see that, depending what the attorney comes back with. It could be introduced, or we could have a public hearing.
Wait, put noise, construction noise in the zoning ordinance?
That was the request, so the attorney's going to weigh in on that.
Calculated.
We have, we have the rules of order that we talked about before. We just have to get those typed up. You guys have packed agendas, so I haven't, I haven't added that to them. We have had, we talked about that emergency ordinance at the last time and making some of those provisions permanent. One of the hot topics in there that people are talking about pretty much every day is food trucks. So if we look at some of the emergency ordinance provisions, would you, food trucks have been pretty sensitive downtown. Do you want to do more of a workshop and invite people in the downtown? Or do you want to jump right to public hearing?
Wouldn't the public hearing offer that?
It would, but when we go to public hearing, you usually have your language crafted. So if you want to hear from people before you craft the language, you can do that, or you can just craft it and then hear from them, because you've talked about it a couple times now.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to come for a workshop.
So draft language and put a public hearing and notify and see.
Yeah, I mean, at the end, at the end of the day, it's not too dissimilar from doing a workshop, right? If there are substantive changes that we want to do.
No, and you can table it. Like, if you get enough feedback that you make substantive changes, yeah, you table it, we'll re-notice it, and you could take it up at another meeting. And then I thought when we do the emergency ordinance things, I don't know how the timing will work, but I can just reach out to Project Review if they want to come individually and participate. They might have insight to some of those things. So that's what, it's a preview of next month. And then as soon as we get that wrapped up, I think the next thing would be working on RFP for the comp plan, and then we have cannabis.
Have what?
Cannabis.
Yeah, that's going to be a fun one.
This is going to be passed.
Or the internet will be. The food trucks, are you going to draft language and we discuss the language and then do a public hearing? Or are we going to do?
That's what I was asking you, yeah.
I think that's.
No, but I mean, but I mean, I suppose a work, a workshop.
We can, I can.
Like a noticed workshop.
Whatever you guys want to do.
I, like you said, Sam, I don't know if we'll get a lot of participation in a workshop.
Okay, so we just, we just.
I like the idea of drafting the language. We talked about it.
It's true, yes.
Oh, draft it, talk about it, and then public hearing a subsequent meeting?
I think. I like that plan.
I do, too.
Draft it, talk about it, then public hearing.
Then open up to the public, yeah.
And if, if public hearing goes completely opposite of our language, we can table it and revisit it. I think that's the right direction.
Me, too.
Sounds good.
Awesome. All right. Last item. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
On second.
Right here.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Good seeing everyone.
Likewise.
Yeah, it is. Give me this. Thanks for my water bottle.
Yeah, that's awesome.